Done, done, done. All right. Good evening and welcome everybody to the June sixteenth Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting. I ask that everybody please rise for Bledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on. Okay, cool. I had to check, make sure our outside Claudia was here. I think the most important person of the meeting. All right, first item on the agenda, we have no minutes to vote on tonight. So first item is resolution. Woodbury Commons Ralph Lauren Coffee Truck. Review decision for proposed amended site plan special permit for the resolution relocate, I'm sorry, for the relocation of Ralph's coffee kiosk and interior renovation of Polo Ralph Lauren Retail Store for associated back of house to support said kiosk property located two eighty-three Red Apple Court, Central Valley, two-two-five dash one dash seventy dot two on the SBL. Okay. All right, I know. Good evening, sir. How are you guys? You can unmute it.
Very good.
Good. Anything you want to inform us of before we go ahead and?
Nothing on my agenda.
Okay, I think we've talked pretty much a lot about this. Natalie, you had a, you had a quick memo on this?
No memo from me. There were no new materials, so we didn't have anything to comment on. We think that, you know, all of the necessary actions for Seeker and the GMA referrals have taken place. We are going to work with Woodbury Common on their submission of a revised overall RMU food truck and kiosk plan. That'll show all of the alternate and approved locations. And then as well, we'll look for that updated GLA Italian map. But that can all be part of the plan signing process and then otherwise, we think that this is ready just for consideration of the approval unless you have any questions.
Does anybody have any question for Natalie or Rick or Max with your conscious application before I go to the read the resolution?
Yeah.
So we will start at number one on specific conditions. All applicable conditions attached to the site plan special permit and architecture review board approvals from nineteen ninety-seven to the present for premium outlet partners LP Chelsea GCA Realty Partnership LP slash CPG Partners LP also referred to in the same as Library Commons Premium Outlets. And any subsequent amendments there too are hereby incorporated into this resolution and has remained in full force and effect. And this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of these conditions as if they were set forth at length herein. Okay. Knowing construction safety shall be the sole responsibility of Premium Outlet Partners LP and their contractors with all appropriate safety measures provided. These features shall also be to the satisfaction of the Village Building Department for public safety. A truck related benches, garbage cans, stands, awnings and other extensions shall not encroach into the twenty-foot emergency service access passage into the common area. Proposed signage shall be in accordance with the approved plan and tenant sign criteria. Proposed outdoor dining areas shall be kept in a neat and orderly condition. Trashless refuse receptacle shall be emptied as required for neat orderly site with adequate availability, capacity for refuse and at minimum at the end of every day. Chairs and tables, umbrellas and any other equipment or furniture, sorry, people coming in still. Not bolted down shall be securely positioned when not used after hours to prevent displacement due to poor weather conditions that may result in property damage or injury. The applicant relinquishes the twenty twenty planning board approval for the Ralph's Coffee Truck to be located in the Polo Ralph Lauren Courtyard and Red Apple Court and no building permit will be issued for the same. Furthermore, the Ralph Lauren Courtyard kiosk location is abandoned as part of this approval. The approval amends the prior approvals for kiosks insofar as the operation of kiosks is no longer limited by the number of structures but by the total GLA reserved for kiosk location that is specified on the table above. There wasn't a table in my, oh, yes, there is. Never mind. I spoke in the wrong voice. Due to the relevance of the coffee truck, I'm sorry, due to the reliance of the coffee truck on the back of house operations of Polo Ralph Lauren, the coffee truck is only permitted in an Niagara Court kiosk location. If, in the opinion of the Village Building Inspector, becomes necessary to control pedestrian queuing for the coffee truck, he may require ropes, cones, signage or any other similar method to be utilized by the applicant. The applicant shall comply with the memorandums with the requirements of the memorandum of the village engineer dated May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one to the satisfaction of the village engineer. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of the memorandum of the village engineer dated, oops, prior to the signing. The applicant shall submit an amended kiosk RMU and food truck plan that demonstrates the approved, including alternate kiosk RMU and food truck locations per this and prior approvals. Prior to the signing as amended, an amended GLA Italian plan demonstrating the approved location of Ralph's Coffee Truck shall be submitted. The rest of the general conditions. Everybody okay?
Yep.
All right, I will offer a motion to accept the resolution as read.
I'll second.
Second by Tommy. Any questions? On favor? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Friedman, review and discuss documents submitted for the conversion of an existing thousand square foot addition of a single family home to be used as a place of worship. Said property is located at thirty-two Blueberry Lane in the Highland Mills, in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two-one-seven, block two, lot four, dot two. Mr. Fusco, how are you this evening?
Very good, Mr. And thank you and the board for the opportunity to review this. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. You want to go ahead and give us what's changed since your last appearance before the board, please?
Well, we've done, you know, quite a bit of additional review. We have, you know, also added some items onto the plan for clarification. And some others, I believe, need to be done. I've read the professional engineer's review of it. And I believe we have a little more work to do, but there is some of it that I believe we are in compliance with that I did want to discuss with you and the engineer. If I may.
Yeah, once we, as we go through the reports, we can go ahead and use those items.
I'm prepared to go through the report and then we'll talk about it through that. But we have been working on it and we did make altercations. We need to make some more and next time we also will provide a more comprehensive review document.
Okay, thank you. Natalie, you want to go first?
Sure. Thank you. So, as you know, this application has been before you on several occasions and many of our comments from prior memorandum have been repeated in this memorandum. I expect counsel and NPV will probably agree that there are some threshold issues with this application that need to be addressed and those are related to the required waivers for the bulk criteria and parking. And then also considerations for water and sewer. There has been a request that demonstration of substance, proof of substantial burden on the religious exercise of the congregants be provided. If adequate proof is not provided, then a variance is going to be required from the ZBA. Based on the plans submitted, we believe the waivers that are required are for lot area, front yard and coverage. The applicant has also requested a waiver for a lot width, but since the lot is complying for a shawl and not complying for the single family use which is existing, we believe this may be considered an existing nonconformity. But we'll defer to Rick's opinion on the same. The most recent plan submission should include or does not include the required setbacks and the dimensions to the structure which should be revised for a complete plan and to demonstrate the waivers that are being requested. Other issues with the application that needed to be confirmed in order to properly evaluate the proposed use are defining the number of occupants that are going to be expected and then also clarifying the area that is going to be designated as a shawl and MIFV within the residential use. Those issues impact the water and sewer demand as well as the required parking. The most recent submission identifies twenty-seven users of the facility versus twelve from previous submissions. And the water and sewer and parking demand calculations will need to be updated accordingly. I think at the last meeting, it was requested that the interior layout plans be, where clearly delineate the shawl versus the residential use. So in future revisions, that'll be helpful to have because that's going to impact your parking demand calculations. We had listed additional comments on the parking arrangement in our memo. But I really think the number of spaces that are going to be required is sort of the first issue that needs to be addressed. But I want to note at this time, while the code allows the planning board to reduce the number of required parking spaces by twenty-five percent, any further reduction in required parking will be, need to be demonstrated based on the proof of substantial burden on the religious exercise. So based on the information available, we believe that sixteen spaces are required at this time. The twenty-five percent reduction criteria gives the planning board authority to waive four spaces. So then, right now, the plan is showing eight spaces, so an additional four spaces would need to be reduced based on substantial burden. So as the applicant continues to develop that proof, that should be considered as well. We would also recommend that at the appropriate time you solicit Mazur's opinion on the traffic to and from the site as well as parking. And then one thing I wanted to discuss as well was the consideration of the access to eighteen Sky Top Road, which is the neighboring property to the south. We've discussed this, I think, on occasion in the past about how the original plan submission showed the retaining walls and the landscaping severely impeded the access to that property. In the, in the applicant's last submission, they showed relocating the driveway off of this applicant's property and back on to the neighboring property. And then in this plan submission, you know, they've removed that altogether. So although it's not the subject of this application, there are impacts to that property that, you know, should be commented on by the ESOs, we believe. And then also since the plan has changed a little bit and we believe this most recent plan may be by survey, the existing conditions should really identify the available width of travel for that driveway. So again, that could be commented by the ESOs. And then if there are any modifications to that driveway, we think an owner's authorization should be required. So we do have another, like a number of other comments on the application, but I think those issues that I've discussed are probably the most critical. And then I believe Engineer Fusco advised that with future submissions, they'll provide a response letter to our comments, which is always helpful, I think, to sort of, you know, alleviate some of the minor issues and just kind of get them off the table and that way those could be fleshed out. So if, you know, I understand there are questions, so I'm happy to try to work through them with the board or the applicant.
Right. Thank you, if I may. Okay, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, one of the things, we did ask for waivers on the front yard and also the side yard, but I actually believe that we may comply with that. Our survey showed that the front yard, we have seventy-nine feet and instead of a forty-seven point one. And being that that's the front yard, we questioned whether we, we did ask for a waiver because it's actually, the side yard is forty-seven, but the front yard is seventy-nine. And that's just a question that we had in relationship to the waiver. We don't mind giving for the waiver and we think it could be, you know, given to us, but, you know, again, it is shown as seventy-nine feet.
Al, if you may, if I may, since this lot is so unique, I think there was a question early on in this application review process whether or not, you know, this, you know, the development was affronting on two streets and things like that. So the building inspector actually issued an opinion on where the yards were located. And his opinion, which we can share with you, I don't have it available at this moment, but was that the front yard stretched between the front of the home and basically all of the lot moving forward. So that forty-nine point one, I believe, is shown or should be shown where the wood deck wording is to the northeast, the northeast corner of the home.
I see.
And, and that there is the most restrictive front yard. So we can share that map with you and clarify that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering because I looked at it and in my review, I thought it was the seventy-nine feet. But if that's what he determined, I have no problem. We did ask for a waiver, so we'll continue to ask for, you know, a waiver in that regard. I do concur with your assessment and I hope the attorney does as well that it is a, you know, pre-existing non-conforming use. We don't really need a waiver since shawl is a hundred twenty-five feet and we have the hundred and fifty-eight. So thank you for that and I hope he agrees with that as well. Looking at the number of parking spaces, one of them had, it was handicapped, so we had to put the no parking area, the van parking next to it. So actually, we're submitting for seven and we'd like to request a waiver of the parking as we have, you know, in relationship, you know, to the substantial burden. We believe we had demonstrated that, so we'd like to continue in that ilk. While we're still talking about parking, we are showing, you know, nine by eighteen spaces. They're not conventional rectangle, but they are a minimum of nine by eighteen and I, you know, will show that on our subsequent plan. And as I did state, I do apologize. We didn't give you a report with it, but we will the next time. We really don't see an area where we can do additional parking, but again, we are going to show the nine by eighteen on sheet three. One of the other things that we had is that we're going to try to, you know, further our hardship and maybe readdress some of the verbiage in that regard. The next item about water and in the use of the MIFV. They really use very little water, only in the initial fill-up. It's, you know, completely filtered and it's usually replenished with, you know, rainwater. So we will try to determine some gallonage. You know, I've been involved in quite a few of them, so I'll try to get some average, but generally the house water is not utilized except possibly for the initial fill-up. And then a certain percentage, percentage of it needs to be rainwater and it's generally replenished with rainwater.
Are there going to be any showers or anything in where the MIFV is?
There are not, no.
And no bathrooms?
I believe there's, there's, there's a bathroom, this bathroom. I guess we'll say that. There is, there is bathroom available.
There's, right, yeah. I think the first floor shows even one bathroom with three stalls.
Right.
And then at the, yeah.
But so there are bathrooms, but there, there are no showers. Let me see. Okay. Is there, is there more question in relationship? One of the things is we're going to try to specify a little more fully the shawl area. Because I see the comments on the architectural work and I'll talk to the architect about that and try to clarify all of that as much as we can, so there are no questions and all the numbers add up adequately. I will make an attempt to get that further corrected, you know, moving forward. Looking at the other part, we're going to recalculate it based on, I thought we pretty much had because, you know, looking at the the twelve and then the students or not students, excuse me, children. We had put in that calculation and it still seemed to come into that number of approximately seven hundred in that area, six something to seven hundred. I don't believe that's really going to change much because of the limited hours that the facility will be used. But we will demonstrate that and show you our calculation in writing so that you can have a chance to adequately review it. One of the other questions was in relationship to the Department of Health. I believe I had spoken to them and they didn't have any requirements on the MIFV. But I will ask for something in writing because I really didn't get anything. I did just briefly discuss it with them. So I will try to get something, you know, in writing in that regard. Regarding the waste disposal, we did show the septic area and the septic tank is right there. We're going to uncover it and we're going to calculate the gallonage based on the size and review it. But we did do a dye test and, you know, it was adequate. It did not show up after several days of use. And the property was in use all of that time as well. Regarding, I believe it's eighteen Sky Top, we are not interfering with any of that easement area. We're not interfering with it. We have added some, we are adding some landscaping near the parking because there could be a view of the parking from some portion of that, those last lower three spots. So we're extending it. There is a electric box there, but we are not going to impact that. We'll be putting the planting on either side of that, so as not to interfere with it. And relation in the survey that there might have been some other items there like possibly a doghouse or something of that nature, we're going to reconfirm that on our survey. I don't recall whether it was on there initially and came off or if it is there, but we will review that. And then you got into the building and I pretty much already related that we're going to, you know, work on that as well to make sure it's extremely clear. Regarding accessibility from the parking in, I believe we've shown, or we are going to show on the plan, it's a seven percent which is within the ADA requirements. And we are not proposing any lighting or signage. And there's really no changes that we've proposed in, in, on the outside of the building. So I don't believe there'll be any ARB review since we're not making any changes at all on the exterior. The easements, there are no easements. We'll re-verify that in writing for you. Looking at Seeker, there was one question, I believe, that related to, are there any water bodies in the area? And we said, yes. And then we said, but we are not impacting any of them. But that answer was no. I don't know if that's clear enough or not, but we will write that out as well. Let me see what else it was. Our comments.
If you don't mind, I just want to respond to a couple of them. I know a lot of these are going to be addressed by a future submission, but in particular, when you discussed eighteen Sky Top Road, I just wanted to point out for the board, which isn't really demonstrated, I think, on this plan really well right now, is if, Al or Chris, do you mind scrolling over so you could see sort of the property line to the south and where that driveway is? Where that property line is, there is existing landscaping that basically borders the property line. So the area of access for the driveway is where the twenty feet is shown. It's basically between that retaining wall and the property line. So that driveway, I don't think is shown exactly as it is in plan view. So that's kind of where our concerns come from. And then also, I know on the plant, on the most recent plan submission, you did provide some right-of-way easement information for sixteen Sky Top Road, which is the property that would be to the west of eighteen. Yeah. So if you kind of scroll in there, you can see where the access is between the retaining wall and that landscaping, even if you zoomed in a little bit more, maybe.
Hold on, sorry, Google.
Sorry.
Google's gone mad. Trying to let it do it so it doesn't put me in that.
Right, like the street view kind of thing.
Street view kind of thing. So this is eighteen down here, right?
That's right.
And then this is sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah, is actually in the wooded area, there's a home there, even further down to the right.
Down here, right?
Yeah.
Down there. It's like, well, where's Waldo?
Right.
Okay, so you're saying this driveway here or roadway?
Yep. And then there's a little bit of green there. That's that existing landscaping. It's a robust hedgerow. So really, there's only however many feet for traffic to pass through to access that home. And in reality, I don't know how, you know, an ambulance or any, any larger type of vehicle would, would get through there, but.
I'll review. I understand. I see where you're talking about now.
Right. And then just as far as the right-of-way easement, I know you did locate one for sixteen, so I think that should be shown on the plan. And then if there is anything for eighteen, obviously, it would be, it would be important. And then I'll look into the seeker issue. I may have misread the EAF, but either way, the one that was submitted was not signed. So if you would just resubmit that with another submission, that would be great. And then the no lighting and no signage, we can, we'll update our memo for the next one and those could be conditions of the planning board's action if they choose.
Thank you.
So I'm thinking, I think you gotta look at the, 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 the water should overlay too. Because I guess it depends on where you draw the line, right Natalie?
Yeah, they've shown on their plan, I think, the buffer area, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't believe that they're proposing any disturbance within that area. Let me just don't check.
Yeah.
While you're doing that, can I just ask, I noticed as the plans have evolved, that patio down by the water has gone from a slate patio and wood sheds. Now it says on both ends that they're buildings and that this patio is completely covered now. What is, what is that going to be used as?
This year?
Yeah, because in the beginning, it was, there was a covered patio, but it was under construction. And on each end, it said wood sheets. And now it says buildings.
We need the planning board drone. Send up the drone. I mean, it looks like there's plastic tarping and plywood there.
I don't know. It's, it's now it's, if you look at the first, the very first map, it said that it was under, the, the the roof was under construction.
Hi, if I can come in a second. My name is Laser. And I'm a part of the applicant. I'm just, um, so that, that building's where, where it was, where it's showing buildings, nothing changed. I don't know why it came up in name of on a building. It's the same woodshed and the roof, what you're seeing over there. We were planning to build a roof over there, but we had a meeting with Gary last week, two weeks ago. And we decided that it's coming gold. So the plastic you're seeing, because Gary made a stop order, so he wasn't able to finish it. So we cover it with plastic for me in time, but it's supposed to come off within the next few weeks. That's about the wood roof, what you're seeing over there. And, and the woodshed, the same woodshed, nothing changed. I don't know who changed the name on its building. But it's the same woodshed.
So they're going to be, continue to be used as woodsheds?
Right.
Well, there'll be no new buildings going on either side of that?
That's correct. And I have one other comment about the eighteen Sky Top Road about the entry. Things were a little bit changed over there. The eighteen Sky Top Road. I mean, if you can zoom in, you will see the bushes. They are away from the retaining wall, but as of now, the bushes are right next to retaining wall and there's a sixty-feet-wide driveway to get into sixteen Sky Top Road. Eighteen, sorry.
Okay. So between here and here or on this side?
No, where you just showed.
Right here.
Right.
Okay.
So now there's an open sixty feet wide driveway to get in. And the bushes, what you've seen over there, on that picture, it's still far away from the retaining wall. But right now, it's just on the side of the retaining wall and the, the driveway is right after it.
All right, so I'll update that, Mr. Fuster will update that on his.
We will, we'll go, we'll also take pictures of the removal of the plastic and uh uh have that available to you, so you will understand that as well.
Can you take a picture of the driveway area down here too, just so people get a better understanding of what that looks like?
Of course.
Thank you. And if you see, you see a drone flying overhead, it's just not.
Village invested.
Yeah.
I wish I had one. We've been thinking about it uh for surveying, actually.
Yeah, real estate agents use them all the time now to get those aerial views of properties. Um, all right, so Natalie, did you have anything else?
No, that's it for now, thank you.
Natalie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I want to offer a suggestion, I don't know, be helpful here. Being we, we seem to be going back and forth with the submittals. Would it be helpful if this board authorized you guys to meet offline? And maybe work out some more of these issues before the next submittal? So that the next time it comes back in before us, we could potentially uh weigh the substantial burden uh questions? Because that's really important, I think, needs to weigh in on here. And I'd like to get us to that point um without having to keep going back and forth in these, these meetings. Would that be helpful? Do you think that would work for you guys?
Yeah, that's totally fine, absolutely, as long as Al agrees, um you know.
Is the rest of the planning board okay with that? This way they can work out some of the technical details before they come back to us next time? And we could really get into the meat and potatoes with the substantial.
Yeah, because we're going through the same thing over and over.
Well, that's, that's why I'm trying, I want to try to move it along, so we don't keep, you know, repeating ourselves here and asking the same questions. That's why I just want Natalie, and if you feel, um I don't know, if you need MPV involved as well, Max will get to you. I haven't, I haven't forgotten about you yet. Um you guys get on a call or something and then just pass all this stuff out. And next time you back before us, hopefully, we can do substantial burden, public hearing and kind of like get some substantial uh progress on the application here.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Um, all right, so Max? Are we getting a live, I saw we're getting a live view of the uh, the residence permitted. It looks like it came up on the screen in a minute.
Oh, okay, um.
We are.
The uh, the uh memo that we had uh provided to the board is, is dated June ninth, I think um Al had mentioned that uh he, he will be addressing some of these submission comments and putting the labels and, and the areas that we had requested.
That backs, could I ask you to, that now to me, I never got anything from, from you on, on the ninth.
Yeah, I, I, I think um, does that usually come from, from the village, Chris, or?
I'm from Maria.
Yeah.
If that, yeah, well, we'll get it over to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because I kept looking for it after I got Natalie's. And I assumed I would be getting it, but uh I didn't, but go ahead, sure. We, we will address uh all labeling, no problem.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had questions on the square footage of each room, which I think you had mentioned. There were some discrepancies between different maps that we asked to be corrected. Um really not substantive matters as much as submission comments. Um Natalie already went over uh the issues with the zoning compliance and the uh substantial burden finding that needs to be made. Um she also mentioned the parking calculations. Uh we agree that it seems that sixteen spaces is where you're, you're probably going to land on the requirement um based on area. Um and, and we agree that it really makes sense before we get into the dimensions of parking, just to see what the actual parking requirement is. So really, you know, the, the comments I'd like to go over, one is, is we think that it would be helpful um just to demonstrate maneuverability in that, in that area uh for all spaces. Um make sure that, that those movements are viable uh to pull in and out of parking without conflicting uh necessarily with each other. Um and really, I think the other question that, that's most pressing on uh our memo is that this seems to be a very large space for um twelve worshippers and, and fifteen children. Uh I think, I think the total area is two thousand seven hundred sixty-three. The main sanctuary is a thousand square feet um based on assembly use, building code. You know, that would normally um accommodate sixty-six uh worshippers in that area seated. Um, you know, going down to, to uh twelve. We, you know, I, I guess we, we're raising the concern as to, it's really probably a matter for council uh as to whether or not it's possible to put um obviously, there's, there's no physical restriction to uh additional uh assembly. But is it possible to put uh, you know, some, some kind of condition here and enforce that condition uh to make sure you are getting, in fact, you know, twelve worshippers and fifteen children and not sixty-six worshippers um in that assembly space? Uh I, I think other than that, uh most of our comments uh really probably would be addressed in the forthcoming submission.
Thank you.
Rick, you have anything you want?
If I may mention about the, about the um issue with the square footage of the, of the space? Because I don't remember, we talked about this last meeting as well, and we have provided the plan showing all the um square footage, how the spaces is uh, is separate. I mean, how it's divided, which each square footage on, I believe I su, I gave it to Al. Al, do we, did we um submitted this plan with the square footage on it, with the labels?
Yes, yes, we did.
This one, the one up here? It should be like a table on the plan showing like each space with a script for this and what it is, what it's used for. Do we see it on this plan here?
This plan was the same as what was received for the prior submission. So if there was another version created after the last meeting, then it hasn't been received by the board.
Yeah, there was, there was one, a, a newer version showing like a table which eat, with each room with the square footage and what it is used, what it's used for.
Yeah, we didn't get that one, we didn't get that.
We, we didn't see that one, but that would be very helpful.
Sure, I mean, yeah, I mean, we have to, I guess we have to submit it to the next meeting or what?
Yeah, um because we, we can't review anything that just gets put up, because no, no one would have time to go over it. And you have to have another, you're gonna have another submission anyway, because there's questions that still need to be answered. So you can submit it to the building department, don't get it over to the consultants. And when you guys have your meeting, they can, they can use that plan to, as reference, to answer, help answer some of the questions that may be uh come up.
Are you referring to the, to the private meeting you said that you're gonna do?
Well, when I, when I, I don't want anybody thinking it's a private meeting. It's a meeting between applicant consultants to help work out.
My question, it will be with the applicant, right? I mean, it will be the applicant with the consultants.
It'll be the consult, it'll be, yes, it'll be the consultants and the applicant. But and again, it will be a consultant's meeting just to work out details. Then consultant would come back with the reports to us and then that would give, we'd have a chance to review it. It just, it's to, it's to help speed up some of the technical details.
Yeah, I understand.
Those frontage and driveways and stuff like that, so we don't have to keep asking you guys to, and you put it on the mapping, you put another submission in. This way, you guys work that all out, and next time it comes to us, hopefully, it's in a, it's in a good spot so that we can start reviewing the substantial burden and schedule a public, schedule a public hearing.
And we really need to see what's, what's the shul? And, and then the rest of the residents.
Sure, it's, it's all day now, then it, I, I, I thought that you have it already, but we'll, we'll, we'll give it to you, we'll submit it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chris, can you go back to the one uh, the map you have with the, with the parking spaces?
This one?
Yeah, you got two number fives here, so you're actually down a parking spot.
Yeah, it's my number.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, well, it's really at my spot, so.
Well, what, 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 one of them, uh, I think you're right, thank you. But one of them, uh like uh, we're gonna make number eight handicap parking, so seven will be a blockout.
Yeah, you're gonna lose a spot because you have to have the eight, what is it, eight feet, ten feet for the, the ramp.
Right. But, you know, we'll have that for the submission and I will call.
So you'll have seven actual parking spots and the eighth is a handicap spot?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that, that's why Tommy, that's why I want the, the consultants to get together and kind of hash all this minutia out right now. So that way, next time it comes back to us, the, the waivers and substantial burden are, are clear, precise. We know exactly what they're, they're looking for, because right now there's a little uh ambiguity there and we just wanna.
And one other quick thing, this might be premature, but you were talking about with, with the water usage, that you're gonna be using rainwater to replenish, you think they might be using rainwater?
I think they have.
They, they have to.
Oh, they have to?
Yeah, it's part of the practice.
Okay.
Have. There was um, like a few of the other shuls we looked at have had um outdoor, uh like larger gutters and outdoor uh retention, collection ponds, I think.
Like a bladder.
Is that something that would show on plans, that they actually have those gathering?
I saw here, there was something that said, this, there's a, something that says water tank.
Water tanks, okay.
I had an assumption that that was storage for
Rainwater.
Rainwater collection, or is that just like the hot water and stuff?
No, oh, you're correct. It's for storage of uh rainwater.
So there's also, oops, sorry, a filtration room in the basement area as well, or is it the basement? Oh, mikva filter room next to the dressing room.
So they'll, on there's some plans, they'll show the collection system typically.
Okay.
Usually it's just uh larger gutters, you know, like you have like a rain barrel on your house.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In this case, it just goes into the, into the building to be stored.
Chris, I do have some questions, so if everybody else has done.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so this is just for men and children. Number one, so what do you define as a child? What age, what age is?
Um, I'll answer that question, I don't know specifically, but I believe they're uh generally teenagers.
Okay, if, if we could get a specific answer on that. And then I know in the narrative, you said that there's, you know, such a need for this. Well, where is the, where are the women gonna go?
Well, the women, the women are, are not um, they don't have to go to shul, not all. I mean, most of the women, they don't go to shul on a, on a, on a um weekly basis.
What about the mikvas though?
They don't, it's, this mikva is not, is not uh made for women to use, they go, they.
I know, that's what I'm asking, so where do they go for their, if they want to go to shul and they, and they want to use the mikva, where, where are they going?
So, so the mikva, the, the mikvas, when they do the mikvas um for the um, for the religious purposes, it's, it's being done in a different, on a different way. Um we didn't anticipate of providing this. I mean, maybe it's something which is, I mean, i- it's something which um maybe someone will have to do sometime, but it's not anticipated to be in this project to, to have a, a uh mikva for women.
So it'll be conditioned upon potential approval that it's for the, the number of applicants and for men only. Is that allowed, Rick?
Well, it's, it's allowed in the sense that you're not arbitrarily imposing this restriction that no women can go. But the applicant is representing that no women will be attending shul or using the mikva. Um and that is being used by you, that representation, like other representations in your analysis. So if there were women that were there, then your analysis would change. So it's the applicant that's dictating this restriction, and there will be a condition that no women will be allowed to attend shul um or mikva, they can't.
I guess, I, I guess where I'm also going though is, the argument is being made that this is necessary because the nearest shul is too far away. But if this cannot be used by women, are you, are you saying that none of the women in the area are going to shul? Or that they, they are going?
They could go further out than the men can?
They, they, they would, they would not go, because I mean, it's not, it's, it's a mu, it's a big difference between when and the, the, the um the pr, the practice, between man and woman going to shul is a big difference, okay? So men are supposed to go to shul every day and one, they not, they don't have, I mean, it's not something that they, they practice. You know what I mean? When we provide the place for a woman to go, it's optional for a woman to go. I mean, it's not something they, they do as a, as a practice, like they, like, like a requirement or, but it's, it's.
You're saying that none of the women are going to go to shul someplace else? When they want to?
If some, if, if one of the woman will want to walk to a different location, it's up to, it's optional for them to do, but it's not something which they're gonna have to do every week. So in other words, the burden here, the, the, the hardship is for the man, they have to go to shul every week. So they have a hardship because they have to go to shul and don't have where to go. The woman, they don't have to go to shul.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong though, but I, I, I think what they're saying is, so you're, you're saying the women never have to go to shul to practice the religion? That it would, i- it's, it's a, it's a burden on the men, but not on the women?
It is, because uh like I said, the, the um the way it's set up, the way it's set up is that men go to shul. I mean, it's not, it, it, it's not um, I mean, it's not, it's not ma, it's, it's not uh like a practice, but it's not the.
But, but, but do the women go to all the shuls?
They, they can if they want to. But it's a very, very, very small percent of women go to shuls. Very, very, very small percent of women go to shul. In other, in other words, if you have a shul with a, with a few hundred uh men, you would probably have, have a, have maybe um uh like a very small percent of women there.
I, I think what the, what he's trying to summarize is that um the religion requires that the men attend shul and cleanse themselves prior to uh prayer on a, on a weekly basis. And they have to have a, I believe it's a minion, if I'm saying the word wrong, I apologize.
It's a minion, yes.
A, a, you know, a number of, set number of men together in order to practice religion properly. But it's, it's almost like an option for a woman to attend to shuls. Or what they're representing is, is it's an option that if she did not want to go to shul, I guess she would never have to go to the shul, the mikva, if she didn't want to, that there are other ways she could fulfill her religious obligations than attending a shul. Am I, am I, am I, am I summarizing that right? I'm trying to just summarize.
You're right, I mean, in, in other sense, if, if you think about it, the, 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 the woman, they stay home with the kids at home. So you have the, the little kids, they don't go to shul, the girls, the kids, the boys, they don't go to shul, they stay with the mother at home. So um it's, that's the way it is.
Okay, but again, if, say there's a handful of women in that area, in that block, that decide now that they do want to go to shul and now because this has been granted, now say.
They can't go with their families.
Well, no, well, not only can they not go with their families, but now what if they say, okay, well, now we want sixteen Skytop to be a women's shul.
So, so if they want to go, if they want to go to shul, the woman want to go to shul, they don't have a shul where to go on this, on this location. If they want to go to shul and they want to make sixteen Skytop for a woman shul, which is probably not gonna happen, because I mean, they're not gonna do a woman shul, but if they want to do sixteen Skytop for a woman shul, they have to go for a planning board meeting and get approvals to make a shul. But right now, there is no shul for women. So if someone wants to go to a shul, that they wouldn't have a shul on this, on this block, on this, in this place. This is not meant, I mean, this is being built for, I mean, this is being occupied for men. If, I mean, if they want to go to shul, they wouldn't have it in this block right now.
Okay.
And I, I, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, because we, we have seen a few of these before. And typically, I think two thirty, right, was the only one that had provisions for women, if I remember correctly.
They had a mikva and a shul for women.
Right, but that was the only one out of the three we, four, or four we've seen. I think this, that was the only one that had any provisions for women.
And also, if you remember the plans from there, I, I saw it, um it's a very small area compared to the men's area. The, the woman's is a very little, small room compared to, to the, to the men's shul.
Yes, it's upstairs and it only has one way in and the same way out.
So it's a very small area, because a very little percentage of the women are coming to shul. And, and they wouldn't come on a regular basis neither. I mean, if someone will want to go, it's gonna be like once in a while. I mean, it's not that we have to provide, to, 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 they don't have to come to shul, as Chris bring, brought it out very well.
And I, and you know what, this applicant's in front of us right now, and whatever happens with this app, application happens, that's application. It would be, if they, another shul came in front of us for next door, you know, Rick would guide us on what a substantial burden is and what, you know, what is. We, we, unfortunately, I think we would have to. We 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 unfortunately, I think we would have to just deal with that application or that situation when it comes up. Right now, the applicant is telling us this is what it's gonna be used for. They're willing to, they're going to have to, you know. Get a resolution if it gets approved that this is only what it's being used for and. I I I think we kinda, I I completely understand what you're saying, Sandy, and I get where you're going. We kinda have to. Weigh this application on what's in front of us right now and not a bunch of potentially what could, you know, happen, what could happen down the road, right?
So for my own knowledge, I'm still fairly new at this. We can't rule based on, and how do I say this? We we just have to rule on what's being presented to us, not like what is probably going to happen.
You you gotta look at it like any other application, regardless of it being a shul or not. If you gotta look at it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know that.
You can only, you know, there could be potential, I don't know, a a Greek church could go next to them tomorrow, right? You know, a. A a forty thousand square foot Greek church could potentially go next door to the shul, but you know, that.
What as far as, I was thinking that women will be going to this shul also.
But then they would have to come back and they would have to come back before this board and amend. The special permit and the and the process and they would have to make provisions for the extra worshippers. The increase in parking, the increase in warnings.
So so we we just go by what they're applying for and what the what the guidelines will put in place are.
Generally, generally, that's true, and I think it's true with respect to this application. I I don't think that's an absolute, Tom, but um. The, for the most part, the application before you is dictated by the applicant and you respond to that. Um, certainly, I think that's the case for this application, although there might be some. Where it needs to be tied to other aspects for various reasons and you would have to also take into consideration those other aspects. But I think here, you you're not going to make your decision based upon what may happen with respect to women. Because as Chris said, if they wanna do it as to this one, they'll have to come back and modify the site plan and special permit.
I mean, more, I mean, even the all the time that that it was used in the past, there was no woman there. It was only for men.
There was one other one just uh for everybody's recollection. It was the Millvale Lane uh Serpentine Road. Uh shul and mikva, just.
That was the first one we did. That's, I thought that was both, but, okay.
I wasn't, I I I think I joined in the tail end of that one. My my, that's what made me get involved, Sandy, you. Oh, smile. All right, um.
Thank you for allowing us to get together with the consultants and uh is that the stuff in office Natalie I should call?
Yes, that's great.
Thank you.
No problem.
Hold on, Sandy, you have any, I didn't know.
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
No, I'm good.
Rick, anything you wanna before the applicant goes?
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously, we still need to address the substantial burden. The applicant has tried twice and. It is what it is that they say substantial burden and this board has to determine whether or not um that passed the test of substantial burden. If it doesn't, then they would have to get variance for those rather than waivers. Um, the only other thing that I I want to address, which was punted to me twice, so I need to um receive it. Um, and that is with respect to the pre-existing non-conforming lot with. Um, as to the single-family use. You're not allowed to expand single and pre-existing non-conforming uses. When they're ex- um combining the single family and combining that with a different use. Your code requires that it be combined. When it's combined, it is now expanding that um single-family use, so they would need. Waivers as to both with respect to that. It's a combined use and combined. Um, it's as they've requested. Um, I think the way that they've requested it is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So hopefully with your next submission, everything will be a little bit clearer and we can hopefully go from there. Anything else for this applicant or this application from the board of the consultants? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Fusco and team.
Thank you. Your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, item number two, Jacob ARB five, Allegheny, Allegheny. Uh, review and discuss ARB and ridge preservation review of proposed single-family dwelling located within the subdivision known as Woodbury Villas. Said properties located five Allegheny Cross in Central Valley is known in the village of Woodbury Tax Maps, section two five five, block one, lot. Change folders here. Okay. Mr. Harmon, you wanna give us the thousand-foot view as usual, please?
Hi, um. I hope everybody has the submission that I've submitted. Um, it's a eighteen sheet, eight and a half by eleven booklet. Basically, this, basically, the purpose of this booklet is assessment for a sheet. Uh, is to prove to the board that the seven Allegheny Cross, uh which is referred in this uh pre- um presentation as the site. Um, is not visible from designated view quarters, um, which creates the rich preservation. And therefore, I would ask the board um to remove this particular lot. From the rich preservation um restriction, um since it's not gonna be visible from any of the v- view quarters. Um, just to give you a quick overview overview, um first sheet is the, just a um repeat of the. Of the, how's it called, the site plan, which also has the. Um, previous admission didn't have the driveway. Um, there was a comment that we should put on the driveway on it. Um. The next one is just to give you a little bit of overview, since I'm gonna mention those addresses in the. In the booklet, the site marked red, and I'm now at page number three, and the neighboring properties. Um, the next couple of pictures is the pictures of the sites and the neighboring properties on it. First one is a close-up. A little closer, a little farther, page number six, a little farther, has the site. Three Allegheny Cross, thirty knots and point, and then picture number five, you get a overall picture of the entire area. With all the properties marked. Um, to continue, I basically just put a little bit of an index on page number nine to show where I took all the pictures. So if anybody, so they can kinda see where it was taken from. Um, from ten to eighteen, I basically what I did is, um, in order to prove that you can't see it from the view corridor. What I did is I went to the actual view corridor, took pictures. Um, to show that you can't see the property and then I went to the property, took pictures um towards the view corridor. And to see that you can't see the particular view corridor. So basically, page number ten shows you the area where I took the pictures. That's the view corridor that is visible on the thirty, on the. Thirty-two, correct? Yeah, that's the thirty-two. It's only this area that this entire area is visible. If you go a little bit before that, you can't see the entire Woodbury Junction development, especially not that area. If you go a little bit more than that, you won't be able to see it. The only place you'll see it is by that little stretch between the seventeen. And where Woodbury Commons ends, basically right across that has the school. Um, then I took a, this is a Google shot, show the area of the view corridor. Site, the difference in elevation, two hundred and eighty feet, and the distance, which is a thousand and thirty feet. Um, next picture is from the property. I took a hundred eighty degree towards the view corridor and. You cannot see the actual thirty-two because the way the, if you see the way the mountain flattens towards. So you can't see down towards the thirty-two or the Woodbury Commons or the school or any of that area. Um, then I went to the thirty-two, took pictures towards the property site. Zoomed in, first picture zoomed in four times, next picture zoomed in ten times. Remember, this is a thousand and thirty feet away. Uh, showing that you can't see the house, which is in front of this property. So you're never gonna be able to see that property, definitely not. So page eighteen is zoomed in ten um times to see. That you won't see the particular property.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I just, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, I I'm just wondering, how much does this changes in the winter time when the leaves are not on? Is, are we gonna see the same results as what we see with the leaves on in these pictures?
Um, most likely, but if you remember, you can't see the school, you can't see Woodbury Commons. You see it during the summer, correct? When you look at page number fourteen, this is a picture taken of the height. Where the, where the roof is gonna be of this house and you can't see the Woodbury Commons. If if you go a little bit towards looking down, let's say you walk down a cup, uh, let's say. I know, two hundred feet, you can actually see the thirty-two, you can actually see the the school. You can actually see the Woodbury Commons. So I don't think it's a uh winter, summer type of thing difference.
There's um, it's almost like it drops.
Yeah.
Towards uh the the White House on the left, where the water tank is. I think, remember, it it kinda drops down as you go over in that section.
Correct. And not, so if you look at picture number eight. I'm now standing at the location of the house, the proposed location. And this is the house which you blocks it, but even this house you don't see.
I think, you know, the uh pictures six and seven on pages twelve and thirteen. Actually show a good reference to the, to the water tower and you're actually below. The the, you would be below the fitted kind of the water tower, right? That's there, the water storage tank that's there.
Yeah.
Just uh, Rob, that I can kind of give you like another idea where it would lay up there.
Yes, picture seven, you can see, you can't see the entire valley. Won't be able to see the valley because it, the mountain straightens out on top. So let's say if you would walk down the street. Uh, the next property is around the two hundred foot uh wide property, but two hundred to fifty, two hundred, let's say three hundred feet, you'll be able to look into the valley. The way you are right now, it's impossible to see the valley.
Any other questions from the board? Comments, concerns? Let me, everybody's thinking, let me go to Max.
Okay, yeah, so. We uh provided a review to the board um. Dated also June ninth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we did do a site investigation. Uh, and we agree that the site is not in fact visible from the view corridor. Um, to to our judgment, uh, we included some site investigation uh photos as well. That we had taken uh on our site visit. Um, based on that, the planning board would be uh able to waive. All or parts of the ris- ridge preservation uh standards at its discretion, uh if it agrees that it won't be visible. Um, with regard uh to. Um. Uh, the color, the proposed color of the site. Um, we are suggesting novo white, uh is not really a natural color. Uh, that would blend into the background, uh which is the intent of of that provision. Um, so, uh, you know, unless a waiver is granted, the planning board should discuss if they agree whether white would be acceptable. Um, with regard to the natural material, we had a a brief discussion at the last meeting. About whether stucco was a natural material and I I didn't wanna answer very quickly because. Um, the code really talks about wood, brick and stone uh being natural materials. And stucco is essentially the mortar uh that you would use in a stone or brick wall. Um, it's just smeared uh really directly over um. Over the structure, uh over a lattice, um. And rather than being, you know, part of the structure of the brick wall, uh so we weren't sure whether or not um. That would really qualify as as uh natural. Uh, one caveat to that is is it's very tru- it's very common nowadays. Uh, to put the stucco over a foam paneling system, uh commonly referred to as EFS. Which stands for External Insulation and Finishing System. And that sort of um pattern is is really not a natural. Um, finish, only because it it, really, you can do things. With EFS that you wouldn't be able to do with a regular stucco. Um, and and we go over that in our memo at some length. Um, really, I I think the bottom line here. Um, is maybe this is something that uh the planning board wants to take up and and suggest some changes to it. Um, because if if the intent of this code is to make sure that the structure is less visible. Uh, to the view shade corridors, um a better standard than natural materials. Uh, may result in better uh results in in serving that intent. Um, with regard to the roof, uh, the the charcoal shingles uh would seem to meet the standard. Um, and the house is is much lower profile than others in the area. Um. And then, uh unless a waiver is granted, the applicant would would still need to confirm that the proposed. Uh, glass will not be highly reflective. Um, and uh we would suggest if if they are proposed low-y windows, which is is fairly typical. Um, that the applicant uh apply an anti-reflection window film. Um, in the app, require a label. Um, and then we had some uh submission comments with regard to. Area twenty-five feet in width is required with one shade tree for every.
I'm gonna repeat it. Um, the reason um I did not do all, like, all the, address the colors and all of that. Um, because as I said in my presentation, I changed course um of all of that and. All of that referred particularly um for the rich preservation and as the. And as you've mentioned, it's to prevent, so you don't see, um, that it's blends in. When viewing it from the view quarters, but I changed course basically and I'm now asking the board to totally remove it. Since I'm trying to show that it's not gonna be visible and as the. Um, how's it called, the tear party to here, as I said, they did the same thing and they looked at it and it does not. You cannot see that property from the view corner.
Oh, we don't, the board doesn't actually remove it. We give you an exemption to the provision, so.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so that's, that's, yeah, which uh you would you'd be, if granted, the board would be giving you a waiver from those uh requirements.
Oh.
That's that's the whole intent of us looking at it and reviewing it and um. Max, I know there was supposed to be some conversation between, and I'm sorry if this was talked about, why uh my computer froze. Uh, between you and Natalie about vinyl, the the vinyl siding in white. Did we come to a determination, did, at some point, did we slip that color in there?
Um, I I do know Natalie did send something, um. Natalie, do you wanna go over that?
Yeah, I I don't mind uh commenting on that. I sent a lot of information over to NPV uh last week, actually. So it was all of the historical ARB approvals for WP three and um Jonathan had indicated they were gonna review it. I didn't wanna double duty, so um in my, you know, looking through and scanning all of those things. Uh, I did notice that uh and I, again, I didn't look at it in depth, but I noticed that on a few approvals. Uh, white was uh actually prohibited, so um I don't know if that's consistent throughout and uh as far as the siding. Um, again, and and I think this applicant's proposing stucco, so I'm not sure about the stucco, but I believe. Uh, there were some approvals that um allowed siding with a texture, but. Um, again, I I think that all needs to still be flushed out, so I apologize for not having an answer for you at this meeting.
That's, that's okay. I know there's a lot to dig through. There's a lot of uh site plan, the site approvals and revisions. With this, so with this project.
I would just stress that, that I think that really the standard should should have more to do with. Um, whether or not the wall cladding is is something that's going to be highly. whether or not the wall cladding is, is something that's going to be highly visible because it's, you know, vinyl can be very reflective, especially if it's, it's, you know, made to look like uh, clapboard, smooth sided. Um, a lot of the stuff that's going up on houses nowadays doesn't even look like vinyl. You know, it really does almost look like uh, shingle siding. It's, it's much different. Uh, so I, I think that um, it may make sense if Rick, you know, Natalie, us, just have a quick powwow and, and decide that the language needs a little bit of updating to better serve the intent of the law, I think.
Okay, thank you. The I'm trying to think. Any else have any questions for the applicant right now?
A question, um, Mr. Hartman, do you have any samples of what Nova White looks like? I, I did look it up, uh, and it looks like it has a little gray tint to it. It's not pure white or very bright white. Is there a sample that you could provide for us?
On the original, on the original, um, how's it called? Regional submission, which was a month, I did pour a whole sheet of samples um, what Nova White is. Um, it's not a bright, bright white, has some, I would say more yellow to, tone in it. But it is, it is, it shows as white, definitely shows as white. But in white, there are multiple levels of white. But it, so you would, you would look at it and you would say that's a white house, that's white. But it's not the brightest.
I see your submit all from May, so is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
You have a three D uh, rendering of it.
And I think towards this end of the, towards the end of the booklet, it has material selection.
Yeah, but if you look, it looks, that looks gray, that's the Nova White, it looks gray.
Um, when you look, when you look at it next to a white sheet, it may look gray. If you look at it at a house, um, not next, not on a bright, bright white sheet, it may, it would probably look more whitish than grayish.
Okay.
But I think I'm a little bit more hung up on is the stucco, because I'm looking through your, your pictures. And actually, uh, Mr. Hartman, all the pictures you submitted to us, the houses are a combination of siding and stone. I don't think I see a single stucco house in the picture. Now, I'm not saying there's not stucco houses up in other development, I'm just looking at the pictures that you gave us. And it looks like everybody is like stone on the front and siding on, on the other three sides.
Uh, not says, everybody has some siding on this, on the front. But uh, there are on that street particularly, and I did submit, I did just, um, I did, how's it called, sent to the building department a particular um, ARB approval that did approve stucco, not white, um, but different colors. But again, um, the whole attend of this um, thing, all attend of this restriction is because white is extremely visible from the view quarters. And since this property is not gonna be visible at all, it's not gonna be a big of a difference if it's white or not. Um, honestly, if you take a look at the houses around it, they're all white, mostly, correct? If you take a look at sheet, they're white. And even if you would have been able to see this from you, from the view quarter, there's no way to see if it's white siding or white stucco, in my opinion, when it's a thousand thirty feet away. But either way, whatever it's gonna be, you're not gonna see it. So the tend of this law is because it should blend in as part of the hillside.
Right.
And, and if you don't see it, what's the difference, what it is? I mean, and as far, as far as to stand out in this area, I, this picture itself has one, two, three white houses and two non-white, you know?
Right, well, the whole, but is ridge reservation in this ARB, you, you, there's, there's, there's two things here. So you got the ridge preservation restrictions, and you got the ARB, the actual architectural review board that also make sure the house blends into the overall neighborhood. So that's well, I'm, I'm sorry, Sam?
That it's not excessively dissimilar.
Right, so we, we're looking at, you know, so we got two different things working on here, we're saying uh, is your house visible from the view quarter, and if it is, it must be A, B and C. And then under ARB itself, you have to look at the overall community and make sure that the house fits in with the rest of the community. So you, we're, we're traveling down two roads at the same time, and we just, I just want to make sure we don't get our signals crossed here.
I think that was one of our things from the last time he was in front of us was about how he's not the, the rest of the neighborhood is not, he, he's not assimilating really, correct?
This house looks very modern in consideration of the other houses around it. The other houses look more colonial, this looks very um, clean line. I mean, it's a beautiful home, don't, I'm not saying that it isn't, it's just, it, it doesn't, it's, it seems out of place.
We still have the underground windows on this applicant? In the back?
Excuse me?
Do we still have the underground windows on this applicant? Were there some windows that were partially underground on this?
Same designer, that part is a different project.
There are some windows on the backside that uh, do have small window wells, like, it looks like a, about a foot underground.
So, all right, well, we still need a public hearing, if I, if I read your memo right, right, Rick? So.
Yes.
We don't need to make any real decisions tonight, but we do need to give the applicant guidance going into the public hearing. And I want the board to be, let's look at ridge preservation first, before we get into ARB. In terms of ridge preservation, how does the board feel about visibility from the view quarters and the home given site visits and what the applicant has provided?
I think Mr. Hartman's shown that it's not in the view quarter.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Can I, can I add one point, though, uh, just to consider with that? What the code provides is that if there is, um, and I, I, I don't have those photos in front of me, so um, this may be off base, but I want you to understand that if the fact that it's not visible is owing in part to vegetation on that lot, then you can require that um, to be not taken down. But if that's part of the reason why you're not seeing it, because it's no sense in saying, well, I can't see it, and then they clear the lot and then you can't see it.
It actually looks like the house next door to it blocks the view.
Yeah, hold on, I wanted to, I was trying to great share my screen before my computer locked up, but I suddenly disappeared, so hopefully it doesn't do this to me again. So the, this should be the lot right here, right?
Yes.
So I don't read a lot much, my layer. Oh. Yeah. This kind of thing, so this is so you have this little strip of trees across from the driveway.
No, it's, it's not that property, it's the property on the other side of this one.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is all gonna get cleared out, right?
Well, it is, this, the property is not the way it is, the way it shows on satellite. Five, there were says five.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is it clear, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Hartman, I've been up there so many times and looked at so many different lots, I get confused of who is, who is who now?
So it, no, it is the way it is, the way it shows on the sa-, on the satellite image.
Okay. So are you going to, are any of these trees here gonna be left?
He's planning to keep any property, any tree that is within ten feet of the property line. He's planning to keep, um, just like the next house, that's my house. And we also have that, this one, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And we also had an agreement that any, any tree that is within ten feet, just in order to create some kind of a uh, you know, a little bit of trees in the middle. Um, so he's, he's agreed and intended to do the same thing.
So what you're saying, Rick, if I'm hearing you right, is that we could say that as part of a resolution that a ten-foot buffer of trees will be maintained between property lines?
If that's the, if that's part of the reason as to why it's not visible is, are the, that, those strips of trees. And if that's true, then not only should that be part of the resolution, but there should be a restrictive covenant um, that those trees cannot come down.
Well, then do we take into account like Robert was saying earlier about in the fall or in the winter when those, the, you know, the foliage is gone? Is it then visible?
Well, what you, once the foliage goes down to the hole, I mean, you can't make an applicant wait till.
I know, I understand that, but.
Actually, there, there are lots of, lots of applications that are made to wait to see whether or not um, they have leaf off conditions that make it different.
Oh, I understand correctly, I think you do that.
And this board has done it even. But I don't, you know, it's, part of it was, uh, Max had looked at this, all of you have looked at this to say it doesn't appear that it's visible from the view corridor. And all I'm saying is that if part of the reason it's not is because of trees on their property, then you need to be protecting those trees, because otherwise it doesn't make any sense, because then it's going to be visible when they take down the trees.
Um, correct, and if I may add to that, um, in my opinion, and I've, I think I've proven it on the sheet, it is not a, it's not a tree that is blocking the whole thing. It's basically the topography of the hill that blocks that entire valley. Um, because I've taken the picture with no tree inside, so right in front of the trees, actually where the mouse is right now. So if you take a look at my booklet, it, it's not a tree that is blocking the whole thing. There's a house, but even without that house, it's the topography, you just don't see the entire valley. You don't see the school, you don't see what we comments, and.
If, if, if in fact, that is the case, and that's what the planning board needs to decide for itself with your input as well as Max's input and, and any input from H to M, they have to determine if this is not visible from the view corridor because of other reasons, because of hillside, because of something else that's not on your property, and it's not visible, well, then it's not visible. And that really ends the situation with respect to ridge preservation. The only thing that I wanted to input is that if part of the reason that it's not visible are trees on the site, then you need to be protecting those trees.
Judging by pictures eight, nine, pages four and fifteen, I, I agree with, with Mr. Hartman, it's, it's the house and the topography that blocks this house from being seen.
Mr. Hartman, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On pages thirteen and fourteen of the booklet that you handed us for this meeting.
Yeah.
Um, the house that's in the distance there, you see it on page seven, you see the entire house, and on page eight, it's over to the left.
Correct.
Okay, so that house, just for reference, that house is twelve Hudson Point, right?
That house what? I didn't get it.
That house is twelve Hudson Point.
This house, right?
Uh, let me take a look, because I marked it.
That one?
Um, that one is eighteen Hudson Point.
Eighteen Hudson Point. Okay, okay, that's on it, I'm sorry, yeah, so that's the one that everybody can see.
Right.
So if, if that's, if where you're, where this site is on pages eight and nine, you're seeing, that's the part of the house that you're seeing. You, you don't, like you say, because of the topography, you, you can't even see Route thirty-two from there.
No. No, I just want, uh, yeah, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with, it's not new, it's not visible.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna stick with what I said originally, I think he's proven that it's not visible, and it's not because of the trees, it's because of the, the house, the surrounding house and the uh, the topography.
All right. Last ridge preservation, does everybody agree on that based on topography, the pictures and NPV group that not seen from view quarter?
I agree.
I agree, all right. Um, but we still have ARB to, now we could talk about, I mean, we still have a public hearing to get through, we gotta hear public input, but do we want to give Mr. Hartman some feedback on the overall understanding? I believe, was you saying it looked great, you said it looked very modern, or was that you, Rob? Some, it looked right.
I, I did say it looked very modern compared to the other houses.
Yeah, I do, it looks a little bit.
It's very straight lined and, and.
Looks very new.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, it's a beautiful home, I just think it, it looks like it's being dropped there.
I think the other homes are more traditional looking, and this is more modern.
So if I may ask you a question, um, just to understand a little bit, the tend of the ARB is so everything looks the same, or to not have a neighbor, um, or to not decrease the value of the area or, or neighbor's uh, house because something very dissimilar is, is in that area, so it's gonna, so it affects their how, home, their value or their niceness of their home or their comfortability or whatever it does.
The code.
What's, what's the, I, I understand that if you put a Frank Lloyd Wright type of house over there, it's not gonna, it totally, it's completely off. But if the tend of the, if the tend of the law is to unify the whole thing, is everything looks totally the same or just?
Exactly the opposite, it also says prohibits homes that are excessively similar.
So again, is it the ten, just I guess for the neighbor, for the quality of the neighborhood? So this house doesn't decrease the quality of the entire neighborhood, is that correct? Or am I saying it right? I'm not, I don't.
No, it's not quite right. Because they wanted to protect home values, they then instituted these restrictions. So the restrictions don't then get re-reviewed as to whether or not it may affect property values. So the, the restriction, the regulation that the planning board has to deal with is to make sure that the home is not excessively similar or excessively dissimilar to the neighborhood.
And I guess the question is if a modern type is considered excessively dissimilar or excessively dissimilar means if you would put a, as I said, a Frank Lloyd Wright or Gary type of building, or just a different style is considered dissimilar to?
It would have to be a different, if, if it was determined to be either excessively sim-, excessively similar or excessively dissimilar, then the board would not approve it because they're prohibited from approving things that have that excessive similarity or dissimilarity in a neighborhood.
I, I get it.
I, I just, I agree, it's, it is a beautiful home, um, it's just when you drive through there, it doesn't really go with what's up there.
It's gonna stick out like a sore thumb, pretty much.
I think, I think, Mr. Hartman, I think your home like begins to get a little bit away from from the columns and the other homes that are up there. And then this home goes even further, like much more, much more modern. Yours is still like across, yours is, yours is different from the ones around the corner, but it still has a little bit of the traditional, you know, it's, it's the siding, it's the, the, the lines aren't as
crisp.
Crisp and industrial almost as.
Blend, it blends old and new together, make it a, well, this is a very stark contrast, very like Sandy saying, crisp, straight, you know, it's like the, uh, the faucet, the Moen-Foster commercial. I want you to design a house around this, it's very, you know, very modern, very stark. Um, is uh, I mean, you're how, you're like, your home is guy, I hate to take on your home, you're, you have a beautiful home, but your home has a character with the, with the colors, with the, with the finishes and the lines and the shape, this is just a box with big windows.
Correct, and that was the tend, I mean, this person particularly likes that style, that was done that style. And I do like more, as I said, character, roofs, different roof slopes and things like that. Um, again, if the board finds that this similar, dissimilarity means just a different style or a different, you know, way, different, that, that style is totally dissimilar, I'll definitely work on it and uh, devise it. Um, just a question, just a question, what the board looks at dissimilar, because in a level of dissimilar, there are, as I said, multiple different, if you would put a, as I said previously, a total different, like a today type. Like a today type of house, that's considered similar or even just a different style is considered dissimilar, then I would have to. Um, revise it and make it, I guess.
I, I think it, it definitely is difficult to define, right? It's sort of. Like the Supreme Court said of pornography, I know it when I see it, um, kind of thing. So the. The issue is not that it's dissimilar or not that it's similar. That's not prohibited. What's prohibited is excessive dissimilarity or excessive similarity. And that's why it's difficult. To sort of give some guidance as to what may change to make it dissimilar, but not excessively so. So I think that. Um, one of the ways to do it is for you to come up with some different rough sketches. That you're happy with, with changing some things to sort of tone down the excessiveness of the dissimilarity. Uh, but s- so that you can get something that's approved and have the board react to it.
I think maybe not as many big windows in the front, like the big floor to ceiling windows. Um. It's, yeah, it, it's, it's hard. It's hard to wrestle with, but like Rick said, it's like you, you look at it now and I'm picturing it with the rest of the neighborhood. I'm like, no, it's. It just doesn't fit up there. Some columns, maybe I.
So, so about to ask the question, the way it is right now, you see it as a, an excessive dissimilarity, is that correct?
I do.
Yeah, I think that's what the board is.
So that, that's, that's what I want to see. As I said, it's very hard to determine and to pinpoint exactly what's called excessive, whatnot. But I do get that the board looks at the way it is right now as an excessive. Um, and again, so it wants to be more similar to the other, but again, it can be very similar. So.
But you don't want to have like three of the same houses in a row either. You know, you don't want to have like, look at four houses and every house is, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with Levittown, New York, but where I grew up.
Cookie cutter, boom, boom, boom.
Every house, you got, you look down the block, every house is exactly the same. You either got a cape or a ranch and the only difference was the kitchen was on the left. Or the kitchen was on the right, but they all looked the same when you looked at those, looked at those homes. So that would be excessively similar. So I think hopefully with that, you know, if like Rick said, if you could just do, and I think we're really looking overall at the front of the house truly, right? Team. It's, it's.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I, I would think that's the majority of it, the front.
And maybe it's just the, the, the starkness of the, the white and the black. I mean, the black and white is just, it, it just sticks out. And it's, there's no other materials. Like again, Mr. Hartman, you have the stone and the siding, so it kind of breaks it up. Some of these other houses, I think it's because they have the shutters and the columns. This is just very.
Straight lines.
Yeah.
I get it. I totally get it. Okay.
Alright, so I think what we should do for now is I think we'll let you go back and, and sharpen your CAD. Cause no one uses pencils anymore, right? Um, I think we should show, hold off on the public hearing for now, uh, because I think we're gonna get a, a different rendering perhaps from you about.
I, I do feel I'm gonna get something that the town, that the board is gonna be happy. So we're asked if, um, if it's possible to do, to schedule a public hearing because. The client wants to get it done and he's gonna be ready if it needs to be changed. Or if it needs to be changed to make it look similar, he's gonna do it. So.
But the, the problem being that the public wouldn't have those renderings. So, so it can't comment on it. They really need. Something that they can comment on, not something that's going to be changed.
Correct, but I'm not saying for the next one, but for the, from two from now. Um, let's say for the, the week, not, not the next, not the next, uh, ARB, um, ARB. The one afterwards, um, which means I have to submit in order to get onto that CBA, I would have to submit two weeks before. Which means two weeks from today, I'll submit everything.
Well, what, what, what did the board want to see the, the renderings before we go to our public hearing?
Typically you do.
Typically we do. You know, we don't, we schedule a public hearing before the board's views.
So if that's the typical procedure then, I guess.
Yeah, this way gives us, this, they give this board time to provide you feedback in case there's something glaringly. You know, that this board is like, well, you know, you, you need to make revisions of, um, and if, you know, if you come back and you, then we, we could move you on to. The public hearing from there and just keep the process rolling along. Um, I, I hope the feedback we, the board provided just now gives you some direction to go in. Um.
Rick, do we have to vote on the, um, the ridge preservation or no?
It's clear in the record that this board believes that, uh, it cannot be seen from the view corridor as a result of topography. Record is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
In the, in the, uh. In the resolution, it will be noted.
Okay. And Mr. Hartman, you're pretty clear what you, what we're looking. As clear as we can be, as clear as we can potentially make ourselves.
Okay, not a problem.
All right.
Thank you.
More, thank you. All right. Now it's fun to have fun with Rick. Local law time.
Uh, this, this is really Kelly's doing with the Board of Trustees.
Rick, now Rick's the applicant.
I've, I've reviewed it and I've made modifications to it, but it's, uh. At least the one, the one local law is a very difficult area to legislate.
Oh, well, let's, let's keep it official. Introduction local law number seven of 2021. Reviewer for, uh, review referral by the village board of trustees for introduct- introductory local law number seven of 2021 entitled, uh. A local law amending chapter three, 10 zoning of the code of the village of Woodbury to provide regulations for gathering places. Uh, I believe, Mr. Golden, you're here representing the applicant tonight?
I am simply the messenger, passing a proposed local law from the Board of Trustees to the planning board because they are dying to have your comments.
Flattery will get you everywhere, Rick. Uh, I think, uh, ladies first, Natalie, you're up.
Alrighty, uh, so we did issue a memo on this and we have a number of comments and I think as you guys already discussed, it's. Gonna be, um, I think the law is first of all, very well written, but it just becomes difficult to.
I did have a lot to do with that, by the way.
Yeah, I was gonna say you put the ball in Kelly's court quite a bit there before Rick.
He is gonna kick his butt when he gets to the law tomorrow.
I don't know if it would be helpful for you or if you want me to kind of go over my comments one by one, um.
Uh, I, I think we should, this, this, this law's got a lot of. Potential moving pieces to it and I know, um, there are, even my reading of it, I had a kind of, had a some, it, to me conflicted some areas of our. Code currently, and I know you picked up on that, so.
My head is spinning.
I think it's a good, I think this is one of those things we kind of gotta just go through.
Sure.
One by one and kind of pick it all apart and go from there. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I know you're listening.
Hi, Tim. So.
When we, just before we get started, so if, if you want to go through it, I think that's a good idea to go through it point by point in, um. Natalie's memo is, I think it would be helpful because I'm going to have to try to put together your comments to send them back to the Board of Trustees so they can consider them. In a potential redrafting of it. So when she goes through something, if you say, well, that's fine, we're gonna adopt what Natalie said, or. We're gonna adopt part of it, or we think it's fine, we don't need to resolve it. It would be helpful to me if you would do that.
Okay.
Alrighty, let's get started. So for, um, our first comment, it's related to the definition of a gathering place. Um, and we have a couple of parts to this comment, so, uh. Prelimarily, uh, the definition seems to apply and the regulation seems to apply to indoor gatherings only. Uh, so we recommend the board consider whether or not, um, outdoor gatherings, which could have similar impacts to parking and, and lighting restrictions should also be regulated by this. Um, so that's the first part of that, uh, but whether it's gonna be indoor and outdoors, just indoor as it's written.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that one. I think it's a. Right now is written as a, a finite definition. We need to. Be inclusive.
And then the second part, um, is that the definition uses the term habitable. Um, so what our question is, is whether or not that needs to be further defined, um, as, you know, are attics and basements and garages considered habitable? Um, and then furthermore, if you're gonna consider outdoor gatherings, are detached garages, barns and tents considered habitable? And are they permitted and should they be regulated? It gets a little tricky, um, you know, and again, and it like. Deciding on whether or not there should be a definition for habitable and or. Clearly, I think restricting certain places, if that's the intent, um, is, is how I think that this clears that up.
Does, well, let me, uh, let me flip it around the other way. Is there a building definition to what is considered habitable? Space? Asking you as an engineer, like I have a per, like to me, a habitable space will be something that is conditioned. Or has a, a, a non-leaking roof or running water or is, is there like a, an industry term that defines habitable?
I'm not sure, but I could look into it. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, um. If it makes sense for me to interject now, cause I have a very similar comment.
I think, uh, you know what? Normally, I know we don't go through like line by line, but I think, but I think. This discussion would probably be better as a, a group. Um, just so we don't step on each other. We don't, you know, I know there's a lot of similar comments and the similar comments. So I'm fine if everybody's okay with that kind of making this a, uh, the, a virtual round table. Or, um, and I think it'll be better to go through, through all this. So just everybody.
Yeah.
Or not just step on top of each other.
We, we actually in, in our memo, we suggested some, some, uh, language that, um. We used in Montebello because we had the same, uh. Concern and in Montebello, uh, the, the code requirement is that only habitable spaces within structures. In compliance with all applicable fire and building codes. Um, may be utilized for residential gathering place. Gathering shall not be held in temporary structures outside of the residence building or permanent accessory structures more than three times per year. Nor for a duration of longer than 10 days. And I think. You know, and, and maybe Rick could, could even polish it a little bit more to make it better, but I, I think the, the idea is that it would be habitable. In compliance with the building code, right? In the fire code. So if it's not deemed a habitable space under that, uh, definition. And it's not within a structure. Um. It would not, uh. It, it would not qualify for that use.
But then.
Except for the next sentence, which is a temporary structures limited, limited times.
Now, there are, I know there are people that put temporary structures up, but now is it legally, a legally permitted temporary structure? Because I could say I just put a temporary structure on my property. And I'm only gonna use it for 10 days for my gathering of like the line people and I'm gonna tear it down.
Well, it's like an outdoor wedding, right? So if you, if you have a big property and you want to put an outdoor wedding up. And, you know, you, you have a permit already for a. A residential gathering place. It, it would, you know, you, I, I don't think the intent would be just because you have the permit for the residential gathering place, you can no longer. Have an outdoor wedding for your child, right? So this would, this would. Or even allow maybe an outdoor gathering place on your property in association with the assembly space. But it shouldn't be like a weekly thing. It shouldn't be a monthly thing. It should be very limited, I, I think is, is the point.
I don't necessarily think that there's anything wrong with requiring habitable to be conforming to the building code, but I, I wonder if that doesn't. Still not answer the question about. Attics and basements and things that could be complying to the building code, but are they habitable? Um. And I think in some, I think what you had said with, within those temporary structures, I think that provides some direction. Um, you know, as those, all of us who have to look at the code and decide, you know, what it means, obviously Gary's. The ultimate authority there, but, um, you know, having that clearly specified is helpful, I think. So. Um, you know, if tents are permitted, then they are. If they're not, then they're not, um, you know, and, and then maybe the law provides some discretion for the planning board to decide what's habitable.
Can I, I, I just, I want to be honest, right? I, I feel like we're, we're not even off the first. Paraphrase. And we're already talking about something that already has a lot of gray, that already has a lot of questions and a lot of gray area in it already that we're trying to define. Are we? And are we just. Trying to put something through that just at the end of the day is gonna be so ambiguous. Is that a word, Rick?
No.
No.
Ambiguous.
Ambiguous is what you're saying.
There you go. That it's just not gonna be enforceable or. I, I, I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to be honest here because at the end of the day, it's gonna, you know, we're giving our comments back to the board. They're gonna have to tweak it. But then it, this, it's gonna be this board that's gonna be required to. You know, adhere these, these, this law to what, what's going on out there and, you know, grant these, these special permits and stuff, but I. Just, I don't know. I just.
The, the thing is, is that, uh, obviously the, the reason that, the usual reason why you, uh, the Board of Trustees would be enacting a law or any legislative body would be enacting a law. Is because there's a perceived problem. That they want to solve. So simply because it is difficult to solve, doesn't mean that we ought not to be regulating it.
Right.
Uh, I think that. If anything, talking about this habitable area, um. You could go a completely different way. And eliminate the habitable part, right? The reason why regulations for building codes, et cetera, have habitable. Because they want to restrict people from being in a place. Right? For usually on a pretty permanent basis, right? So they, they define certain areas as not habitable because they don't want people living there. But we're not talking about people living in these areas. We're talking about temporary gatherings of people. Who may very well be gathering in places that aren't necessarily habitable under the building code. But you still may want to regulate them. Even if it's not in a habitable area, because if you're going to. Say, we're gonna regulate only habitable areas, that means it's unregulated where it's, um, not a habitable area.
You know, and I took, I, I, I hear what you just said, Rick, and I looked at it at a different way that. You know, habitable is for the building code and but. We're potentially going to allow people to gather in a uninhabitable place, which potentially. Would be non-conforming to the building code. So you could potentially have a safety issue there then. Too, because I think this allows for up to 50, for up to 50 people. So if we shove 50 people, 50 people in an attic with a pull down staircase.
But if you're, if you are regulating. Where people are gathering generally and saying there, here are these restrictions, that doesn't do away with any building code issues that might exist.
Wouldn't that be like an occupancy issue?
Yeah, there'd still be occupancy issues. It's, there'd still be all sorts of things that this law is not trying to, uh, mess with. Right? You know, there's still going to be issues where people aren't allowed to do something. You can't put. The fact that you are regulating an area that's a porch. And saying you can only hold things at a certain times, et cetera. Does not say that you can exceed the occupancy limit for that porch, right? You can't mean that you can put 50 people on a, on a wooden porch that can only hold 10 people. Um, simply by regulating this gathering law. So it. It, I think it's a tricky thing to try to tie it back into a code. When the purpose of this isn't really code related. It's related to trying to stop people from gathering on a regular basis. In a way that is not anticipated in the typical residential neighborhoods that we're talking about. It, I'll tell you that going over this, and I went over it several times and Kelly did a great job in drafting it. Um, and I modified it somewhat. But when you start getting down into this stuff, I'll tell you, your head hurts.
I can attest to that.
It, it's, it's very difficult area to regulate. Um, and you can, as you're, you know, lawyers, when we are crafting local laws, we're constantly. Uh, figuring out how people might be able to twist something to get around what you're arguing. That's why it's, it's so hard to. To craft very good local. to craft very good local laws. Um, and you're constantly going through what if situations in your head and you come down with this. Um, and but then somebody else will read it and, and they'll think of something else to modify, which is the whole purpose of sending it over to the planning board.
Can, can, can it be stipulated that it can't exceed occupancy laws and?
I think it says, I think it says it somewhere in here.
Did it say that?
It, it wouldn't anyway. The, they, they wouldn't be able to go ahead and, and supersede state building code. And they're not trying to do that.
With respect to this issue, then I think, Rick, that's a really good point, right? Either taking habitable out of the definition or, you know, further defining that and being specific about what the planning board thinks is a reasonable habitable area or what isn't.
But also, I mean, obviously habitable has, you know, if, if you go the direction of also wanting to regulate outside use, habitable really doesn't apply whatsoever. You know, if you're going to have people in your backyard, you wouldn't necessarily, certainly under the building code, you don't define that as a habitable area, your rear side yard.
Right. I think the definition right now, it reads, um, conduct functions or act, other activities within habitable areas of a residence. So then I guess it would say, or outdoor, uh, areas such as tents, detached garage. So I think that part of the definition would have to be revised to say outdoor, but habital, habitable, habitable as it is now relates to being within the residence.
Yeah. And, and I didn't think about this part when I reviewed it. I certainly didn't, uh, modify that, that language, but the possibility is to simply take out, you know, the habitable part and just say the residence.
So let me ask a question about that is, so if you have a, a non-habitable basement, so the basement doesn't meet the building road code requirements for, um, egress, right? That's considered non-habitable. You couldn't put a bed in there and sleep there. But you can still use your basement for recreation. Same thing with low attics. You're typically under the building code allowed to use it for recreation. You could have somebody over, you could have 20 guys over every weekend to watch the football game, which probably would fall under the, uh, the, actually, I'm not sure if that would fall under the definition of this residential gathering place.
Well.
30 people over every weekend during football.
But that brings, but Max, that brings you to the next couple of sentences for the u- usual family functions of celebrating birthdays and holidays. I mean,
Right.
What is, what is considered a usual family function? I mean, listen, every family considers things different, right? Your example of having everybody over on Sunday for, to watch the game is normal in your family. My family, you're going to say, come, you're coming over to watch the game. We're going to go, what game?
Essentially, let, let's get down to the basics. So it's the, the, the problem that is being considered to solve is that most people in residential neighborhoods don't want every weekend for someone to have a football party in which they have a hundred people in there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it, weekend and week out, or maybe every Wednesday night. Um, and not have it regulated whatsoever. And so the, the village is trying to say, well, we've had complaints and we want to regulate something so that people aren't, um, you know, imposition by others' conduct. And there's many laws that are written to try to stop the imposition of one person's conduct upon another person.
But isn't that what your, your sound warnings is and all that come?
A sound parking, road obstruction.
Right. But without regulation, that can happen. And somebody's neighborhood could be taken over by such things.
I, I get you. No, Rick, I totally get you. I, I understand what the village board is trying to do. I just.
When I read that one sentence that you just said, uh, Chris, about the, uh, excluding normal family functions, I actually thought it was, was really well considered. But I do get your point also because a, a lot of the ones that are out there don't have that. Um, and, and try and deal with timing and, and number of people and whether or not it includes the resident or not in the calculation of people. And which raises all kinds of enforcement issues, right? How do you know who lives somewhere or is it, it's maybe staying somewhere? And so, you know, it, it, it's good and bad in the fact that it's subjective. You know, it's, it's not easy to enforce because it's always going to be open up to interpretation and, and it opens it up for somebody to, to judge.
Enforced it on this one, not the other one.
Well, but my biggest thing is how is this going to be enforced? If, if you have 51 people in your house, weekend after weekend, who's, who's going to count that 51st person?
You gotta get clicker. Clickers to everybody.
Sandy, it's really no different than many other zoning infractions. Um, where somebody thinks that somebody is exceeding what their approval was or exceeding what is, uh, a- allowed under the code. They file a complaint with the building inspector and the building inspector, depending upon the circumstances, is required to, um, investigate and may use different methods to determine it. I mean, you have people who live in, uh, you know, uh, illegal apartments and residences, right? You know, how do you, how does a building inspector determine that? The building inspector many times sits out there like a private eye and makes, you know, determines how often these people are going in there, whether or not it's the same car, uh, in order to even get enough information in order to get a warrant to go in and check it out as to whether or not there's really, um, an illegal apartment in there. So it's, it's part of that, the job of enforcement. And yes, it may be that they stand there with a clicker.
But if these things are happening on the weekends, I mean, I, I don't think anybody from our building department is even on duty on the weekends, are they?
Yeah, but we gotta, we've got to look at it in, in the light that.
I, I understand that, but it, it just, I mean, it, it sounds like.
And I think it, it certainly has happened in other jurisdictions where the town board or the village board of trustees says to the building inspector or the code enforcement officer, you know, we're having a lot of problems with this particular residence on the weekend and we believe it's violating the zoning code for the uses that they have. Um, so we want you to go out and do it. And they end up paying overtime for that.
Okay.
But if that's, if it's important to them, then that's what they'll do. If it's not important, then it won't happen.
Okay.
Is it also a police issue that, that if someone's doing this constantly, that the police can be notified due to excessive noise or traffic situation where a road is blocked?
Well, they, they certainly can respond with respect to, um, safety issues dealing with roadways. And, um, they normally do not get involved with, you know, zoning restrictions and enforcing the zoning code. They do enforce, um, you know, VTL and safety issues dealing with roadways, but they're not going to be going out there and counting the number of people going in.
There's no way to simplify this.
No.
Well, I'm not saying there isn't, but we haven't come up with it.
Um, we're throwing these against the wall here.
Yep.
That if you want to have for anybody that wants to have a regular or if you have a regular gathering of 15 or more people, you have to come and get a special permit to, to do said gathering and you have to meet these criteria, parking, blah, 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 blah.
If it occurs more than 12 times per calendar year, yes.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're, maybe we're making it too. Sometimes simple is better, right? Kids, keep it simple.
Yes, keep it simple.
I, I left off the last S.
I know, so did I.
I left off the last S for savings.
We're recorded.
I don't know. Can we go that route and go like the completely opposite direction instead of, of trying to define habitable space, indoor space, outdoor space, that if you want to have a gathering on your property within the four lines of your property and it's going to be 15 people or more 12 times a year and it's not for a birthday party of blah, 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 you have to come get a special permit and these are the criteria that must be met. Just, I don't know. Does it, does it, does it read any better?
I, 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 I would probably actually leave out if it's for a birthday party because you can always find somebody's birthday. So if you got more than 50 people 12 times a year, then you need an app, then you need a permit.
Well, I see, I see it spinning Sandy, go with it.
No, I think that there's, there, no, I think that's too simple because then, then you, you don't have a maximum. So, and you're not going to be in violation until after the 12th time. So what are you going to have a hundred people? Some wild party on your yard, you know, once a month until you get to, to October and then have it three times in a month and then all of a sudden you're going to be in violation? You know, I, I think, I understand what they're trying to do and I understand that there's got to be certain parameters, but it just feels like you, you've put up one, one, and that leads to questions and that makes another one and another one. I, I just, I don't know. This is.
Well, right now I'm trying to get around this whole habitable, unhabitable, habitable space thing, you know?
I think you're, I think you're on the right track with a certain amount of people on your property.
Yeah.
You know?
On your property, on, you know, something.
Yeah, within your property lines.
Cause I think leaving the word habitable opens it up to too many definitions. And I like what, uh, Natalie and Max said before, then are you outside space, inside space? Do you have a, a shed? Do you have a portable tent? Do you have like an RV? What happens if I park an RV in my driveway and I want to have 30 people in my RV on a Saturday?
I could have 50 people in my habitable space, but a hundred people in my not habitable space.
I, I mean, it sounds ludicrous, but I mean, we, we won't, we've been on this board long enough. We, we, we've seen what people have come and said and I just, sometimes less is more.
So property can be both inside and outside.
Within your property lines.
Within your, your property, within your meets and bounds. We can use some fancy term like that, right? Meets and bounds or.
I think you're leaning towards kind of what Rick said is removing habitable altogether from the definition. And I think we, you know, it could be people meeting to plan or conduct functions or other activities on a subject property. Or something, but that's the recommendation. Is that where the board's kind of going towards the recommendation for the village board is?
I would think so.
Yeah, I, sorry, kids.
I, I would say, yeah, I think that's a good way to go.
Yes. Does any of that make sense to you, Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
Rick, um, if, if you might just, uh, look at, uh, Stony Point has a definition that's very clear like that. And it's a little bit more nuanced than some of the others because it actually has two standards, which is 30 or more persons, more than 10 times per year and more than 20 people, more than 12 times in a 90 day period.
The, the trouble with things like that is that this is going to be hard enough to enforce.
Mm-hmm.
If you now, I mean, just me looking at that means that's more of a burden for the building inspector to try to now have these calendar notations and number of people.
Okay.
But I think something like that would complicate it more rather than simplify it. Um, certainly the, it simplifies it if you are simply saying that they can't have more than X number of people so many times a year on their property.
Okay, good. We got through the first two lines.
I got my sleeping bag.
Um, I guess I'll go on to my second comment if that's okay. Um, and it's just same, same of this verbiage, right? So, um, the law refers to residents, um, and the code defines dwellings. So either we, what we were trying to get at here is, um, although there are places in the code that define residents, it's not within the zoning chapter. And would it be appropriate to refer to dwelling? And then when you look at the definitions for dwellings, there's one family, two family, dwellings in general and dwelling units. Um, so what we were suggesting is that the board consider whether or not all of those types of dwellings, well, first, you know, should dwelling be replaced with, or residents be replaced with dwelling? And then are all of those dwellings to be, uh, considered appropriate for gatherings? Um, and that would be again, just something for you to consider.
So what about if I own a storefront? We don't care?
So we're talking about, oh, you know, that's a good point actually, because we're talking now about taking habitable out, but it has to be on a residential property.
Right. So if I do this and then I own a storefront and I do this, we don't, we don't care.
Well, that's a good, that's for you to.
I, I don't think it, it's that it wouldn't care. It just, it wouldn't be this special permit. It would be something else.
And I think the genesis of trying to regulate this is a problem that is recognized in residential areas.
Okay. I'm just, because I know.
Sure that we, I mean, do we really need the resident, if, if you're going to go the route of considering people gathering on the property, anywhere on the property, is there a need to further define with respect to residents?
Doesn't the property, the, the owner's property, that to me, that kind of definitive, right?
The, the issue that, that I had with regard to that was you have standards here that would be very difficult to interpret how the code provisions apply to, residential gatherings in multi-family structures, for example. If you have a buffer and screening requirements, um, how do you, are, are you screening the multi-family building from surrounding buildings? Are you screening? You know, if it's a multi-building site, one building from the next, and obviously you can't screen units from each other. So it, at that scale, I, if we are going to allow or, or the town is going to allow, village is going to allow gatherings in multi-family or a single family attached, I think you just have to figure out how those provisions apply to those types of structures.
Right. And I think the purpose, uh, of the law actually goes into how it's difficult for most residences to meet the, uh, bulk, you know, yard setback restrictions and parking requirements on residential lots. So that goes back, ties back into the purpose. Um, but then again, it just, the question I think we had was just, you know, specifying residence versus dwelling and then leading into again, what Max was saying is, you know, what, what dwellings are appropriate under the code? Which obviously I think in our opinion, um, those different ones, right? Between one family detached, two family dwellings and dwelling units, which really refers to more of a apartment type of a complex, um, would not probably be, be appropriate for this.
Like a townhouse setting?
That's in, something to consider. Yep.
Like if I wanted to have 50 people in my backyard versus if I lived in Timber Ridge and I want to have 50 people outside my.
Right? A lot of those, a lot of those communities have either community rooms or clubhouses, the multi-family and the, and the single family attached. And that's not even a problem i- if you're using a structure that's built to be an assembly space. I think part of the issue here is that people are using their homes as assembly spaces. Building code doesn't contemplate that.
So you want to say single family private dwellings.
I mean, a, a lot of, a lot of codes will, will limit it to one family detached dwellings. I, I could see it being appropriate in two family homes possibly, but even there that gets complicated. But I don't know, Rich, if you feel like that's, if that's unfairly limiting it.
Well, I think that it's, you would really be giving an escape clause to lots of other uh, properties. You know, you'd say, all right, so the only ones that are limited is, uh, single family dwellings or two family dwellings. And, uh, if you had a townhouse, you could have as many people that you want on a regular basis and bother everybody else around you.
So then if you went the other way and applied the law to all private dwellings, are you unfairly automatically denying people the ability to get a special permit just because they live in a town home and they wouldn't be able to meet the requirements?
But which requirements are you talking about now?
Whether it's parking or screening or setback.
I thought of it a little differently, Rick, that it. I thought of it a little differently, Rick, that if it wasn't per like explicitly stated, then it was automatically not permitted. Um, so like if, uh, or gathering places were permitted in single family residential dwellings, then they would not be permitted elsewhere.
I'll be that would be fair either or.
Or alternatively, you could define them as all dwellings and then just have a a provision in the code that says they're only permitted in one family detached dwellings.
Everybody's head hurting?
Yeah, because I mean, I I'll analyze what you're saying is, I mean, if I live, again, you use Timber Ridge as an example, then my kids graduating high school and I want to have fifty people over. I want to be able to.
Yes, that has nothing to do with it.
It would because it'd be a one time only.
Okay, all right, I I.
This is, this isn't to stop those types of things and it's specifically.
This is for multiple.
Not trying to.
Okay.
You're not likely to have twelve birthday parties in a year. You're not likely to have, um, you know.
Yeah, no, I I see what you're saying, I.
But if you have a rowdy poker game, you know, more than twelve times a year, that's going to be, uh, included in this, if it's the right number of people, et cetera.
I just want to note in the record that we are not taking on the people of Timber Ridge. It's just happened.
No, I I just use it as an example. And I stated that. I stated that.
All right. So we still, I don't think we've come up with an answer yet.
Even Rick has, Rick is like hmm. Well, it's if you go down this road, it's a, it alters a lot of this this law, right? If you're going to say, we're not going to try to micromanage within a piece of property or a residence, you know, and you're just simply saying you you can't do this unless you get you know, you have to go to the planning board and get regulated as to how you're going to do something.
Oh, I don't want this. I I I get the intent, but I also don't want to then turn this into where a step, just a step below a site plan review. We're we're always talking about bulk requirements and parking and.
But I think the problem, the problem, Chris, is that I I think the concern is, is that if someone is doing this on that kind of frequency with those types of people, then it's similar to a use that ought to be regulated.
Oh, then 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 you go the complete other way. And so if you're going to do this and you have to come in for a special permit and a full site plan review and then meet the requirement from a special permit. It seems like we're 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 trying to circumvent. In my mind, we're trying to circumvent the special permitting process that is that is spelled out for uses that are allowed in residential areas by special permit. Is that the whole point of a special permit? I I don't know.
Couldn't it be then as per residence? Like if if you're in a, you're on a three family plot, right? One family can't have more than twelve gatherings of that size, the one residence? Or if you're in a condo complex, one unit can't have more than twelve gatherings?
I I mean, this is really a mini site. The whole law is really a mini site plan review at the end of the day.
Yeah, it's a special, it's a special permit that you would go ahead and regulate something because it's actually sort of a regular use. It's not some incidental gathering. It's this coordinated routine gathering. And, um, if it's not regulated, it it's bothersome to neighbors. I think it's.
Is there a way to take that, kind of what you just said, and say, well, we're going to allow those in residential areas and they're going to require a special permit, which this law requires, but you're just going to have to go through the site plan review process. Anyway, the subject of site plan review. I mean, now we have like two sets of, it's like. I know what I'm trying to say. I'm having a really hard time expressing what I'm trying to say. Um, but now we have two criteria really for special use site plan review. You have somebody that wants to come to us and, you know, say, we want to have gatherings and, you know, we want to make it legal and, you know, okay, fine, we're going to go and.
You're going to get a special permit.
Permit and then go through a site plan review. I I feel like we'd have two processes now for the same thing at the end of the day. I don't know.
Well, i- it's the whole purpose of this law to limit the amount of times people are doing this per year? And would we want to make it a little more difficult if they're exceeding that?
I kind of see this as a safety issue and also keeping peace amongst neighbors, not to disturb them constantly. So I see those two issues as being important in this law.
And they are. They're extremely important. That's the whole point of going to a site plan review process for a special permit. But now we've created, well, you're going to have gatherings that are less than fifty people regularly, then you can go through this site plan review process. But if you're going to have gatherings that are, I guess, above fifty one people, you're going to have to go through this site plan review process. And those two site plan review processes have different criterias to them. Am I, am I looking at it wrong, Rick, baby?
I I I I think you're getting hung up on what is a site plan and what is a special permit. There they are really the same thing in in most respects. A special permit under the, under the law is simply another type of approval that they get from a planning board. Um, it's just that it's the type of use that's not permitted as of right. It's only permitted as of right if they comply with these conditions. Right? So your site plan is that you have a right to come and get an approval and you're just determining how best to give that approval, but they have a right to that approval. A special permit is essentially the same thing, other than in addition to just giving the best approval, they have to satisfy certain criteria. That's what defines a special permit. It's a specially permitted use. The other is a permitted use. And the special part is whatever conditions are placed in the code that has to be complied with in order for you to get an approval. So it's just, it's just a form of getting a an approval from the planning board.
I did want to point out too, not to muddy the waters, but the law actually does specify that only habitable spaces in compliance with all applicable state and village code provisions may be utilized for a gathering place. And then the residents shall conform to the requirements of the district in which it is located. And then it also discusses the bulk requirements and, you know, the provision for the planning board to waive some of those. So I think all of those issues that you would see as a part of a site plan review are going to be looked at. Um, you know, and then, as Rick said, with those special conditions added on to it. Not sure if that's.
I I I I'm not sure of the Board of Trustees' uh, timeline on this. And I don't know if Tim wants to weigh in if he's still awake. Um, the but it it may be that you want to consider, you know, thinking about this some more until your next meeting.
Well, can I ask you one question on that? Are legally allowed to have a public joint meeting, meeting between the two?
Yeah.
Because the, yes, I understand, you know, the law requires, our law requires us to review and give feedback, but I think this this may be helpful to have an interactive meeting. And I maybe I'm the only one that thinks this. Because they they obviously, the Board of Trustees obviously has a set of intentions. We we have one, we have a diff, not a different set of intentions, but we've just seen things differently because of what we deal with on this board. Maybe it improves us all to get together and try to hash it out.
Well, you certainly legally, you can have joint meetings of boards, right? And it just, you know, you can have, uh, non-quorum meetings of each board that would, um, wouldn't even be an open meeting. You could just have it. So if, you know, two people from this board and two people from the Board of Trustees got together, it doesn't qualify as an open meeting and need to be advertised and such, and you can just have it someplace. But if you wanted to have a quorum of each of the boards, then simply as a, you'd call a joint meeting, advertise it. The public would have an opportunity to listen in, but they wouldn't necessarily have an opportunity to weigh in. Um, and you could discuss it.
How does the planning?
I've seen those meetings get very unwieldy when you have now ten people who are trying to discuss the same thing.
I I get it, but I I feel like things are going to get lost in translation, right? This is this is complicated. This is probably one of the more in-depth ones we've looked at in a while. That has a lot of ambiguity in it. That's a word. That I know the word. So you can't correct me on that one.
No, that was right. You used it correctly.
Good. So I I just think, how does the board feel? Does the board feel?
I think you're right. I think I think it's got to be a little bit of a round table, sit down and like, what are you, what are we all thinking?
We, and we can set a time limit on it. We can say we're only going to talk about it for an hour and whatever, kick it around for an hour and then maybe come to a better conclusions than we're we're coming to now. Um, is the, is the top, is the clock ticking? Though, because they refer it to us, don't they have to act?
No, they, it's not that they have to act. They are allowed to act if they don't get a report back within a certain period of time. I forget offhand what time.
Twenty-five or nineteen days or something.
Something like that, right? But that means that they can act without you if, so that you don't just hold off and and block them, basically. So, um, I don't think that we're up against that timeframe right now, um, but you can explore having a joint meeting with them. Um, but I certainly think that, I don't think that you're going to resolve this tonight.
No, I see my Tim put in the chat that he thinks that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
All right. So is the board okay with me tabling this item for tonight? Then I'll reach out to the village board and set something up and we'll go from there.
I'll second and third that motion.
Okay, good. All right. Hold on, we still got to talk about the sign law. They should be pretty straightforward.
This one should be fairly. No neon signs, we're good.
We need signs, yes, we need signs. Okay, motion. So, I believe. Max, did you not have, I know, I thought you had comments on this, on the sign law.
Uh, we did, yes.
I must have put them in a different folder.
That's local on eight, right?
Yeah, it was, it was meant to, it is meant to satisfy a a problem, try to resolve a problem, I guess I should say, that this planning board has run up against. And that is with multicolored signs. And there is this very restrictive law with respect to how many colors you can have in a sign. And you have run up with several problems. Um, because there's like multiple signs within a large sign. And even within each sign, um, some people want to have more colors than the code presently allows. So this is was meant to go ahead and and address that issue that this planning board has raised. This isn't something that the Board of Trustees decided on their own to put out there. This was something that we raised to the Board of Trustees because of the frustration
UPS.
had with several signs.
Yeah, okay. Um.
So it wasn't your discretion. You're no longer tied to those specific number of colors.
Right. So Max, I know you had a little bit of feedback on that.
Yeah, um, I mean, I I think my, my point was, I mean, I I think I understand the intent of of this original law being to make, I mean, three colors, two typefaces. To me, it no, they they want the signs to not look garish. They want them to look uniform among the site. I would imagine that's the purpose of it. So, um, you know, rather than trying to identify the colors and the fonts and the and the typefaces, um, we are just suggesting that you might want to instead take more of like an architectural review approach where you ask the applicant to submit a sign plan that specifies, um, you know, the range of colors they want, the range of of typefaces, graphic styles, um, as a package to you, rather than trying to to figure out what works for the site. Because what works for a single tenant site may not work for uh, a a shopping center that has multiple units. And and frankly, what works for a site, um, I think, uh, I think Rick brought up Aldi's before up in Harriman uh, Center, w- wouldn't work for the building that just went up on, uh, in downtown Central Valley. Whereas, so, you know, I I I wonder if rather than than trying to just fix the immediate problem, might there just be a a better way to allow the applicants to make a submission than you guys judge the signage package as a whole? That was our main point.
And I think overall, probably signage in the, in general, the whole signage law probably needs to be addressed at some point. Um, but I think right now this board kind of wants to get over the hurdle of we really can slow down an applicant here for a fifth, a fourth or fifth color. And it's not fair to them.
Too with branding.
What? I'm sorry.
Especially with branding.
Right, like we, like with the UPS store.
And the Aldi side. And I think right now this is what this board is trying to just give us that ability to kind of get over that that hump and not refer them to the ZBA to have to go through another public hearing, to have to go through another resolution to have, it's silly, right? You're not going to tell McDonald's they can't put their sign.
Right.
Well, can it, can it be stated that i- if it's something to do with branding of a chain or whatever?
But you really don't, don't need that. The way this is drafted and we, Kelly and I did work on this. Um, is that it gives you quite a bit of flexibility. So it says you can uh, modify the restrictions on the numbers. So you can modify three if the proposed additional colors are not deemed to be distracting to drivers. So that will normally include all the branding ones, right? Then that's not going to be distracting. You know, it's not going to be some neon kind of purple that's going to be. So that will give you a lot of flexibility. And also it will allow if and if it's just different shades, because remember we, I think it was with Aldi's, you know, is that two colors because it's a dark blue and a light blue kind of thing? So it really is meant to be abandoned on the one very limited issue concerning the number of colors.
Natalie, I know you had a couple of comments too.
Yeah, I mean, they've basically already been covered, covered. I think, um, the law as it is provides some good direction to applicants when they're making sign applications. And obviously there was the hurdle with the colors that the board's trying to address. And we did recommend kind of like Tom suggested, whether or not, uh, you know, including national franchises and or international franchises as one of those, um, specific criteria would be appropriate. But I think, Rick, um, you know, you've already described it very well that that's covered and and what's proposed. So nothing here.
All right. So I don't think we have any comments to send over on our suggestion, right?
I just, I I just have one question. How does this affect signs that are already up? I mean, are we going to have a Russian people coming back saying, you know, oh, this is what I really wanted, but I couldn't have it then. So now I want it now?
It would allow people to come back, yeah.
Okay.
But I think that was I I think if those people that wanted to come back now uh, say the people that you denied, um, I think for the most part, you didn't want to deny them. So.
But I just don't know if everybody is going to, you know, is it going to mean a Russia?
It it could. I I don't think so, but there's always that possibility.
Okay, I didn't know if it was like from now going forward.
It's also not that uh, cheap to go ahead and now have a new sign.
Exactly.
So I think that people aren't going to do it willy nilly. If it's important to them, then yeah, they may come back.
And okay, we still, we still have our, the leeway, the discretion. So if we.
And this doesn't affect the size or the neon or the moving. This is just color.
Correct. Yeah, this is just as to the three color requirement.
Could I ask a question as to the distracting standard? I I wasn't necessarily clear on on what would be distracting versus.
It would depend. The reason you use, the reason you use language like that in in statutes, you know, sort of this broad based, um, language that someone may say was ambiguous. Um, there is virtually nothing that can be written that can't be argued that it means more than one thing. Um, there is virtually nothing that can be written that can't be argued that it means more than one thing and therefore is ambiguous. Um, so you really can't get away from something that's, very few times can you write something that's completely unambiguous. And the thing that you do with statutes all the time is that you look at it in context. So here, a a particular sign, because of the way that it, and and now we're realized under here, we're only talking about colors. We're not talking about all the other aspects of signage. We're only talking about the number of colors and what colors they are. And it says that it can't be distracting to drivers. So that's going to depend upon the context of where is this sign? How close is the roadway? Is it going to be distracting to drivers? And you can't really set out, well, you know, this kind of color can't be used within ten feet of a roadway. This kind of color can be used within thirty-four feet of the roadway for it not to be distracting. It's better to have sort of this overarching, um, broadly-based uh, language that is is plain to understand. It's not that it's difficult to understand. It's whether or not you determine as a board whether or not such a color or or combination of colors would be distracting.
Leads the discretion up to the board, correct?
Yeah, but but it has a standard. It's not a complete discretion. The standard is whether or not you believe objectively that it's going to be distracting to drivers. I mean, if if you went and said, all right, somebody wanted, uh, four colors and they were red, white, blue and green, and you say, well, that's that's going to be distracting to drivers, so we're not going to allow it. Um, that would probably be considered arbitrary and capricious, right? Because it it's unlikely that that's going to be distracting to a driver on those primary colors. So, um, it's it's something that would come up. The reason that we put it in there was because there was this underlying theme of signage in your code that you didn't want it to be distracting, right? You had that with respect to the number of signs, the size of signs. You didn't want printing too small because then people would start to concentrate on it and therefore be distracting. So it'd be an unusual situation in which colors would be distracting or the number of colors would be distracting. But we thought it was important to keep that basic theme in there of safety that if, in fact, somebody presented something, you could say, well, that's going to be distracting, so we're not going to approve it.
All right, so everybody's good. We'll just.
Yeah, bum good.
All right. All right, well, I think that's it. Thank you, everybody, tonight. I know it was another long one. Um, I will reach out to our liaisons about, uh, a meeting for local law seven, uh, throw some dates out at everybody, and then we'll see what works for people and dimes and we'll go from there. Um, anything you got, anybody else tonight? Okay. I want to offer the motion to close.
Suck it in, everybody. Have a good Father's Day.
All right.
Happy Father's Day, everybody.
Yes, happy Father's Day, everyone. Have a good night.
Take care.